Okay, I'm gonna repeat that Inside Outside 23 Keeping It Real: Young Artists Share What's On Their Mind. We figured out that theme and I broke it, I have the guidelines and as I created a resource packet of art reproductions with text, kind of giving you a background of either the artist or why they did it or both. I kept thinking about what, how could the teacher present this topic? And some of the things I talk about are keeping it real, activities with family and/or friends, social, political concerns, emotional concerns, family rituals, traditions, ceremonies, relationships, observation and neighborhood happenings, fashion, clothing and accessories, hairstyles that you like, interests, what you like to do, what you like about someone or something, place, where you like to be, inside or outside. The deadline for submitting work is Wednesday, April 19th, 2023, and we will have a virtual recognition reception on May 18th, where students, both students and teachers, get a chance to, either the students to talk about their work and maybe to share some things about work that they like, and for teachers to kind of talk about their process and how they inspire their students. On the website, we have passed exhibits and selected students' work, so you can get an idea of how the students presented their images and their statements. This year, we're going to not only have the text in the exhibit, but Mario and I, and if the student wants to or the teacher wants to, we're gonna read, while you see the artwork, we're gonna read the text. So it's more meaningful, we thought, if you see the image and then you hear the text at the same time. So it's a lot of fun and it's a great opportunity and advocacy project to one alert your principal that it's gonna be a virtual exhibit, which the link goes on YouTube, I think. Does it, Mario? You could see it.
The virtual exhibit?
Yeah.
No, you can see, once the exhibit's up, like right now, you can see last year's exhibit, which was Imagine If, which we use for the adult theme, and once you go on here, it's on the screen now. They can download the one-page instruction guidelines, there's an artist reproduction PowerPoint, suggestion and prompts. What I want to add is that we do this every year, and the beauty of it is getting those students that you submit their work, having them a chance to see their work on our website, and then having a chance for them to speak about their work. It's really empowering and we want to keep it so that some of that students can really connect to. So keeping it real is something that we all came up with, I think would engage them. There's a lot of time, I beg teachers, don't wait till the last minute. Think about that throughout the year, put aside 10 works, maybe there's a student who needs the extra boost and the self-esteem. Put their work in and really participate. It's an easy way of having your students recognized, letting parents and administrators know, and it really is an effective tool for advocacy and for the students as well. So we urge you to get in and again, use our website as a teaching tool. You can show them work from the past shows, we have a number of student exhibits up here, so please do use it. And I'm going to stop share for a second and see all the faces. Hello, everybody. If you've participated inside, outside in the past with your students, please give us a thumbs up or raise your hand virtually, and we thank you and we urge you to continue. And those that haven't, you know it's there, please utilize it. Joan, I thank you.
Yeah, and if they have questions, they can email me.
Yes, it's all, it's again on our website, so right here, list contacts, contact, this email here, Nikata 23, and it'll go directly to you. Thank you, Joan. Future events, we're not gonna talk about them a lot, we're doing the FRIC in the spring, a tour of the FRIC with refreshments for everybody who attends, it's gonna be a larger group than Mad Museum, which was limited to 25. And we're going to be doing an artist meet and greet for all the artists that were in Imagine If. Think of it as a virtual reception for this exhibit, you get to hear the artists speak about their work, and hopefully join us live in January, and if we have another virtual, again, join us there. I do want to talk briefly that about, on a state and national level, as a professional organization and as people who are lucky enough to be employed and meaningful employment, we really need to advocate for our profession and keep involved on a national and state level. Here on the website, you'll see the Binghamton Conference is November 18th to 20th. Melissa Bernbaum is hopefully with us and ready to talk about that a little. Stephanie Abbey is getting the Region Art Educator of the Year Award, which she's nominated against all the other regions statewide, so congratulations, Stephanie. And then the National, which is a lot bigger and a lot harder to get to, is in San Antonio, Texas this year. I urge you, if you can't get to the conference, at least consider joining the organizations. Unlike us, there are dues to be paid, but it's part of our professional commitment, I think, to the field. And if you are a UFT member and you're doing a workshop at any of these two events, please contact us, because we're trying to make stipends available so that we can pay, partially pay something for your effort and energy and recognize that as a UFT member, we want to give back to you as well. Since, so please keep that in mind, and Melissa, are you here with us?
I am soon here.
All right, I want to stop sharing and give you the floor, and then you can introduce Karen, that would be great.
Oh, I would love to. Okay, so am I able to share my screen, Mario?
You are.
Thank you. First of all, it's just so wonderful to be here. Thank you for inviting me, Mario. And I see some faces, I see again a shout out, hi Erin, I see Stephanie, our Art Educator of the Year, who was nominated because she made lemonade out of pandemic lemons and brought us together.
I think I have some lemonade.
So it's just so wonderful, and just the fact that you gave me the floor today, I am utterly gracious. And I also just want to say that we really are in partnership, because we're here together because of our profession. We are here to think about our career as art educators, outside of our jobs and inside of our jobs, as they transcend throughout our career from pre-service to higher ed. So this screenshot is just a little bit about like who we are as an organization, right? So in addition to thinking about our career, we're really thinking a lot about advocacy on the state education department level and the national level. So we have a conference every November, and we also participate a lot in the National Art Education Association. So if you are a seeker in terms of your art education career, we are a great organization to be involved with, you know, in addition to Nikata, we really do partner. There's a lot of an overlap between us and we're stronger together. And we just, exactly, and we just instated a committee for June for the first time, like we're getting the region up and running, it's myself, it's, I'm happy to say I'm working with Karen and with a wonderful choice-based art educator, Kendra Waldon Brown, so who's our treasurer. And I just want to give you guys a special invitation to be a part of us, and that can happen next Friday. We're having this killer event at the Society for Illustrators, right? So if you want to learn more and be a part of our organization and just hang out and enjoy some like, a little bit of cocktails, a little bit of refreshments and tour the gallery of the Society of Illustrators and learn more about NISADA, just use the QR code and register, we just asked that you kindly register in advance, so we're preparing for our numbers. Also want to encourage you to follow us on social media, on Facebook or our Instagram page, that's a really great way to link up. We're just building things out, we always announce things like grant opportunities, things that are happening within our organization. And over the summer, like a lot of job opportunities were just flying. In fact, I keep getting emails about people who might want to do other things and where could we find them and how could we link up? So it's really just about linking up, staying together in unity for our fields, you know, which is art education, which is something that we always are going to have to advocate for. And we're passionate about, because we're all here. So that's all I got for now, and I think that was a lot, so please, yeah, you know, and we're at nisada.org, I'll put that in the chat. And we're Region Eight, and I am happy to introduce Karen Rosner, who's on our committee and also an amazing mentor and, you know, professional development and passionate about education, I, that's, I mean, I can't introduce you even better if I tried, I'll try. But Karen, I want to turn the floor over to you as our featured speaker today.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. Mario, thank you for the slides. And Melissa, a mutual admiration society, you are bringing such amazing energy to NISADA. We're gonna see great changes and we want to build up the representation of New York City on the state level. We want you all to not only join, but also, and you think of joining NISADA and NAEA, not just join, but send in proposals, do workshops, share the great work that you are doing. I'm happy to be here, I am actually at the desk of Kevin Lopez, who is the AP at Art and Design. I'd like to say that this great background is my office, which it is not, but I just wanted to share with you that Art and Design has this amazing mural on their roof, in their roof garden. It's painted with something called Airlite, A-I-R-L-I-T-E, and it is a paint that cleans the air. So any kind of fumes, it's going to be doing that for like a decade, it's amazing. And we're going to see if we can do a workshop for teachers who have room, who can do mural, whether it's outside the building or in a courtyard, it's really amazing. So I just wanted to mention that since I'm sitting here. So there's my first slide. Thank you, Mario.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And you have an amazing team. Jackie and Erin and Abby and everyone, you know, I wish I had time to actually mention everybody that I see on this call, this Zoom, because you're all amazing educators. But Mario, a special thank you to you, I want to thank you for bringing the budget issue up at the recent town hall. I don't know if everyone knows that you did that, but Mario was at, I guess it was a virtual town hall.
No, it was in person, it was in person at the Arts and Education Roundtable.
Okay, and I actually was able to get a transcript. And Mario is so, we're so lucky to have you advocating for us, Mario, I can't thank you enough, your voice is so important. And we all need to advocate for the arts. I do want to mention that Chancellor David Banks, in response to Mario's concerns at town hall, after thanking him, I would just like to quote what he said. "The budget for the Department of Education is not created by the chancellor, but through a collective conversation between city council and the mayor." And I know that Mario wanted me to address budget cuts and all of these things. I don't have the answers to that, I wish I did, I don't know if the chancellor does, but you know, things have happened with the budget, so I can't really, I wish I could answer this and say, well, this is what's gonna happen. All I can say to you is to advocate, 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 join Mario's voice, advocate for the arts. Make sure, if you are at a school, because I know we have people here that are from museums and organizations, if you are a teacher at a school, make sure that that art that you're doing is prominent, that the principal understands how important the arts are. We're going to be focusing on our citywide PD, one of our focuses in November will be Elliot Eisen's 10 Reasons Why the Arts Count. So we'll be spending time with that, it's an advocacy piece, so I just wanted to mention that front and center. I do want to mention though that I have been impressed with the chancellor's interest in the arts. He really wants to bring more arts in, he celebrates different months, whether it's Hispanic American Month, we had a Black History Month, Women's Month in March. The author very involved in all the celebrations, so I do think that he gets it, so we do have somebody in our court. I do also want to mention that we have a new executive director. Many of you know Maria Palma, who is one, a role model. Maria retired, and our new executive director is Paul Thompson, who brings a special energy to the office. So I want everyone to know about that, because I want to share what's going on at the office. Again, Mario, grateful to you, we need to advocate on all levels for the arts. And I just, I'm gonna end it at that, but let's move on to some good news.
Karen, I'd just like to thank, thank you as well, and say, I'm a little embarrassed, it's not just me, it's really all of us. It is our professional committee, and I want as many people feel that they can get involved and join, join us in volunteering and in committees and in leadership, and obviously advocacy is a big thing of what we do. So what I like to say is, the teachers out in the field should be our eyes and ears, please let us know.
I think somebody has to mute.
Sorry, somebody's talking?
Yeah.
I like, I like you to, the people in the field to know, if there's a cut or something you see that's just not right, certainly be able to contact either myself or to even send an email to you. Something where it's just an egregious cuts or no budgets at all, I mean, the chancellor did say, and he's a great advocate for the arts, the arts are like the blood that flows through our veins. So hopefully, we as leaders in our respective areas can have some influence and at least have a strong voice to not, when it's time to make those tough decisions, that the arts are not the first to go. So that's all my plea is to everybody on, in the classroom, at the DOE, at the UFT. I think we all need to work together, so I hope we can work together on that and get, and probe the chancellor to really do the most he can to make sure that arts are just not falling by the wayside. I'm gonna continue with your presentation, I know you have a full slate of things to share with us about the state of art education for 2023, so the floor is yours, Karen, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, I'm unmuting myself, Mario, okay. Yeah, so lots of good news, so I do want to share with you, and I have to say that if you have a question about anything that I'm saying, if you have a concern, at the end of, you have my, well, mostly you have my email address and my phone number, but please reach out to me, so we won't have a lot of time for back and forth. Yeah, just go back to the first one, Mario.
Sorry, I was trying to change the size.
So what I really, you know, I spoke to, some of you may know Trenton Price in our office, he was operations manager, and now he's kind of moved up in our office. And I was talking to him about the presentation, and I said, I really want to hear it from someone that is really involved with the finances and whatever, and what I can share with you folks. So for some reason, I have lost my screen, can you still see me?
We see you.
Yeah, I don't know where the slide went, that is so weird.
It's up on the screen now.
Okay, as long as you folks can see it, okay, I can't, maybe it'll pop up again, but that's okay, as long as you can see it. So I'm going to just read a few things, because I don't want to miss anything. There will be studio allocation funds, again, this year, you will get notification in December. The thing is, you will get a letter, your principal will get a letter, so the principal will know that you know about those funds. So they will be, those letters will be coming out in December. I don't have the exact amount at this time, but it is in place, which is great. The important thing is, and I know you've heard this before, the important thing is you must explain to your principals and make sure that they understand that these funds that are coming to every full-time licensed art teacher is not to supplant, but to supplement. Your principal should have a budget, you have a budget, your visual arts budget. This is in addition to it, it's not as if the principal is saying, well, you're getting this money, so I can take some of this stuff out of the budget. So just be aware of that and make sure that the principal knows that you know that, okay? Again, there are, there's ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, there's ARPA funds, and 20% of those funds are to go to the arts. You may remember that last year, I sent a huge memo out to you, and at the very end of the memo, there was a link where you could find your school and see the amount the school was given last year and what 20% was for the arts, so just be aware. So when we talk about advocacy, it really means being aware of what's out there and letting your principal know that you are aware of this. Partnership grants, we have, they're still in place as well. The new RFPs for the partnership grants will be going out in the spring. There are two types of grants, and they are the Arts for Multilingual Learners and Students with Disabilities Grants, as well as Family Engagement Grants. And how do you find out about it? When they are available, when you can apply, it will be in the P weekly, which will go to your principal. So if you are interested in applying for one of these grants and you want to work on this with other faculty in your school, just let your principal know that you are aware that these, the RFPs are going to be posted in the spring and ask your school leader to look for them and to share that with you. You have to be a school to apply for the grant, but we encourage partnerships with our terrific cultural friends. So when you write something up, they have a partnership grants, so please look and see who you can partner with and just be on the lookout for them. If you want to find out any more information, just go to the DOE website and go to Arts Partnership Grants Program. Okay. Next, Mario, the next slide up should be the OASP Visual Arts Programs. Do we have that up? Because I can't see a thing.
It's up, Karen.
I just, I thought for a minute no one could hear me, okay, I'm gonna speed this up, because I know you have a very full program. The programs are fully funded this year, everything we did last year, we're doing again this year. And as far as professional development, even more so, I listed the programs there. PSR, the powerful work is going to be sent out on October 18th. You can still see PSR 2022 at the Met until the end of October. Our Art History Research Fellows Program, which is funded by Studio and a School for our high school seniors, is up and running, and a special shout out, I know she's with us, to April Kim Tonan, because we're going to be doing work with the FRIC, the museum, as well as the Art Research Library, so thank you, thank you, April. We have our Diversity Lens Program, and I just got some pictures of catalogs of the things I'm talking about. So with our Diversity Lens Program is for middle school and high school teachers that work in photography and want to join a very collegial group. And I should mention that the Art History Research and Diversity Lens, we are looking for people that want to participate. You are welcome, we don't have a cap, it grows every year, and we always welcome more people. Judiciary and the Arts is a special program funded by Matisse, I can send you information about that. I just said, everybody that's in our database, a node Ezra Jackie's Bookmaking Competition is up and running again. So be on the lookout for that and read over that email. And last, I wanted to mention, we have a collaboration which continues with the School Art League, and I am very happy to be on the Board of Trustees with Stephen Drake, who is wonderful, and Stephen will talk about the Museum Experience Program soon. School Art League, especially if you're a high school teacher, you should be interested in this, because there are scholarships for seniors, and we have an award ceremony at the Met, day 26, where awards are given out, medals are given out to our seniors, and also a special medal, the Haney Medal for our lower classmen. Okay, Mario, the next one is about our website.
Got it.
Okay, and I think somebody on this Zoom may recognize herself there. Erin, do you see yourself on that slide?
I see Erin.
Okay, and you know, Erin, that's the reason that slide is there, because you're on it, okay?
Because I'm there, thank you.
We love that, that's actually Studio Museum in Harlem, and if you remember being there. But you were a great participant, Erin, so thank you.
You know I love these BDs, they're beautiful, they really are.
We have a wonderful website that was created by our Arts Program Manager, Amber Ladman. You see her name on a lot of emails that go out, she's an amazing, amazing person, and she's an artist, too, she's wonderful. So she's developed this website, the website has on it PD opportunities, which I'm gonna show you in a minute, curriculum resources, information about all of the programs that I just mentioned, opportunities for students, especially high school students. So the next slide, I just want to speak a little bit about professional development. That is, on that website, there's a special catalog, which I, Mario, I guess is up now, it says Visual Arts Professional Learning.
Yes, Visual Arts Professional Learning Catalog.
Okay, so you click on it, you can click through that for all of our offerings this year. And the next slide, the next slide, just is a page from that catalog.
Table of contents.
Exactly, so you can just scroll through there and see all of the offerings we have this year, many, many things. Also want to shout out, if you go down, we have a program, it's listed on page 13 and 14, Careers in the Arts Workshop Series. So shout out to Rachel Thompson, I know she's on this call. Rachel and Amy Boyle are the most wonderful people to collaborate with. We have a very special program that is growing, it's growing out of the series that we did last year about careers in the arts. We started with careers in the art museum, but we're expanding this year. All the workshops will be at the Guggenheim, it's a four-part series, but part two and three, if you're a high school teacher or middle school teacher, you're invited to bring two or three of your students, so they can hear what's being presented and then plan on how they can share it with their peers back at school. So we've got lots of things going on. The next part of the website, I wanted to talk about, this is my next-to-last slide, is the professional development, I'm sorry, the curriculum resources for visual arts teachers. Do we have that one up?
It is, it's green like that.
It's a green slide, okay, so we've got a lot of resources. If you haven't gone on our website, it's always in my signature, and it's also on that slide, and if somebody can put that into the chat, that'd be great, but the, or I can put it on after I finish speaking. But we've got the five fantastic videos by Craig Kane, very engaging, which can be used at all levels. We have excellent resources, and some of you will recognize those people that you see down there, that all are facilitators. Fantastic resources, two complete units per grade level, K through 2, 3 through 5, 6, 8, and high school. They are really rich, and Amy Robinson has done some wonderful work on accommodations for students with disabilities. And my last slide.
Okay, all done?
There you are, okay, it's just.
Here it is, contact with questions.
Right, contact me, and the last two things I just want to mention. The Office of Periodic Assessment has developed these assessment tools, beginning of year, end of year, that teachers are welcome to use themselves, just for their own personal edification of 4th grade, middle school and high school, and they can be ordered, they're free, they can be ordered through the Office of Periodic Assessment. You can reach out to me, I'll give you all the information. And if you decide, those assessments can be used. And if you decide, those assessments can be used as your Mosul. If your Mosul team decides, and if you would like that, because um I just got an email from a teacher that was very upset because she was being graded or uh on what was going on in algebra. Because she didn't know that there were special assessment tools you can use for yourself. So this is up to you. Um, and um I'm gonna wrap it up with that, okay? But please, if you have any questions, I am very responsive to emails. Uh, please email, give me a call, um and I'm happy to answer any questions and just have a chat with you. And please, when you call, please don't say I'm sorry to bother you.
Thank you, Karen.
This is my job, okay? And the best part of my job is working, you all know this, is working with teachers. So I, I really look forward to hearing from you. And Mario, thank you so much for the opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Thank you as well. It, it, we're very lucky to have somebody in your position who's so responsive to teachers' needs and willing to take calls. Sometimes when you want to find an email or a phone number, it's like looking for uh, you know, a, a needle in a haystack. But you are accessible at the curriculum, at the meeting with the chancellor, I did bump into Sharon Dunn. And we've been lucky to have a long history of arts, visual arts coordinators who have been so helpful and, and responsive and, and cooperative. And really, we're looking forward to your work in the state and the DOE. And we, we want to keep that triangle of unity there between the DOE, the UFT and the state. And really keep New York City strong and, and make us a strong voice for advocacy. Thank you so much, Karen, and, and thank you for giving us your time. And if anybody has any questions for Karen, I'm sorry, we can't just spend the whole afternoon just having an open uh back and forth. We have about ten or twelve other speakers who are coming into our Art Speed Dating uh Event and uh, we're gonna start that now. I'm gonna stop sharing. I do want to say, Karen, on our website, on our website, I believe, if I could bring it up.
I can't, I can't see a thing.
Oh, when you talk about the, that website that you have, I believe we have it on here when it says uh the DOE. Uh, I'm gonna find it now.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh.
Visit the DOE's new comprehensive visual arts website here. So when I click it, this is the one, the one with Erin's picture, the Visual Arts Professional Learning Program. So it's there as well if anybody needs it, okay?
Right, it's, it's fantastic and it's.
All right, I know you might have to run, so stick around for as long as you can and.
I will stick around for a little long, I definitely.
All right, thank you so much, everybody. If you want to unmute and give us a, so give Karen a nice round of applause. I would appreciate it and thank you.
See you soon, Karen. Okay, take care. Bye, thank you. I'm still.
Okay, I'm gonna put back our agenda and I'm gonna go into our round robin here. We have a number of groups waiting in the wings to share the amazing work they're doing. And this is what really Nikata is morphing into. We're here to network artists, teachers, organizations, museums. And to be like a, a personal place where you can find information, we have a Facebook page. Please look for it and join it because we have about seven hundred and sixty people on there right now. And there's no administrator saying you can't post that, you can't post this. Put the information out there. There, there were job offerings, there were, if you have a position, there were people saying, I need an art teacher here. It's amazing how important this group has gotten, so please be a part of it. Of course, if you post your kids' pictures or, or family recipes, I will delete them. Art and art education. We will, uh, we've never had that problem. Uh, it's really just about art and art education. And so I, I, I encourage people to join and to continue posting and sharing. That's what we're building here, a community. And I know that Regenate also has a Facebook page, so we can also then interchange and we often share our posts on each other's page. Uh, going on now in number five, we, we have um, I'm gonna get, so you can see it. We have the following organizations, and if they're here, I hope they're all here, uh, in this order, Junk Couture, Arts Connection, Material for the Arts, Art and Education Roundtable, Museum of Art and Design, the School of Artilleria Arts, the Frick Museum, the Teen Art Salon, the Guggenheim, Stableton Arts, School Art Show, I don't think is here, but I wanted to talk briefly about it. And then at the end, I'm gonna initiate an open forum forum where if somebody's here like, hey, I'd like to share something that I know or I can do or a group that's here that's not on this list, would like to share something, they're free to join in. And uh that should take us to the end. Do we all need to stretch a little bit like in my classroom at the halfway point? Okay, I think I'm ready. I'm gonna open this up. I'm gonna stop sharing and I'm gonna ask uh Rory, are you here?
I am indeed, yeah.
And all the way from Ireland, my friend, is a, a great friend and, and an incredible person. Rory's gonna share and and Jackie is gonna be my timekeeper. So she'll give you a notice at three minutes and then try to wrap it up by the fourth minute, okay Rory?
Perfect. I'm gonna start my watch here as well. Uh, great to see you all. Mario, great to see you again.
Yeah, a little louder.
Sorry, I'm on, I'm on AirPods here, so can everybody hear me okay? Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let's, let's give it a go. Okay, so great to meet you all, great to see you all again. Uh, Mario, Karen, great to see you both. Um, I'm here to talk a wee bit about our program Junk Couture. We have been operating in New York now for the last year. And what it is, it fits perfectly into the visual arts program um within middle schools and high schools. So it's a year-round program, focuses on uh creativity, sustainability, entrepreneurship and community. What we challenge the kids to do and the students to do is to design, create and then showcase fashion made from one hundred percent recycled materials. It fits really well into the art program, but then it has the same learning outputs for your engineering, for technology, for home economics across the board. But while we're here talking about art, I think it's a perfect place to kind of run through how you can get started in the program, um, the benefits of it and very quickly, I suppose, the opportunities that come with it. Um, so first and foremost, it's a zero-cost program, um, for kids, absolutely no barriers to entry. Uh, all we look for is an age group between thirteen and eighteen. So it will take in most of your students hopefully. Uh, and what we try to, what we try to do is to become that sport for creative kids. Everybody has kids in their classroom that are sitting and that are very creative and may not necessarily have a platform to express themselves. What we want Junk Couture to be is that platform. We want to see them showcase their skills, showcase their talents and showcase their output on national and international stages. So what does it look like? It looks like, in a sense, our big live event. So every year from twenty twenty-three, we're gonna have a city final in New York. That is gonna be the celebration of culture, of ideas, of design and of talent, artistic creative talent from your students. That's what it's gonna be. Um, off the back of that come other opportunities. This week I'm back in New York. We're doing an event called Climate Week. Um, there's events like this, there's events like red carpet events in at the Cannes Film Festival, at Met TV, at London Royal Film Premiers, things like this. There's all these amazing opportunities that come with it. Also then we have TV and online broadcasts. So if you keep your eyes on Good Morning America over the next couple of weeks, you are going to see a student from North Bergen High School. Um, gonna be featured on Good Morning America with their Junk Couture Design. Um, if you've seen, there's a lovely picture here to the right-hand side. Nadine is a student from Ireland, uh, who took part in our competition last year, and she was all over Times Square uh billboards in the last couple of days as part of Climate Week. So these incredible opportunities for exposure and, you know, to showcase again that talent. Um, and then we also have films, documentaries, things like international media, some amazing titles there. You see the Times, Vogue, WWD, Fox Ten, all these amazing things are picked up on what we do and also what the kids. Okay, so what you can do now to get signed up, I'm gonna leave a link in the box. I am a bit like Karen, I'm open at any time for emails. If any questions, shoot me a message. Uh, we have our broadcast coming up October twenty twenty-two and then submission for our twenty twenty-three competition takes place in March, that should say twenty twenty-three. Lovely talking to you all. I'm gonna drop a link here with my email address. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you Rory. It's great to see you. We, we are, you are on our website as well and we'll update the link as well on the website. Uh, this is for the New York City teachers specifically to participate in the New York City event with twenty twenty-three, correct? Thank you so much. Great.
Great seeing you all, thank you.
Enjoy Climate Week.
Cheers, we'll see you soon.
Cheers. Uh, we are moving on with uh Arts Connection. I know Amanda Guest couldn't be here, but somebody is here to help represent Bridget, is that you?
Hi, yeah, it's Bridget.
Okay, hi, just, you have the floor and let us know. Arts Connection was one of my favorite groups as a teacher. I participated every year and I think every teacher should know more about it. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, thanks so much for the introduction. So Arts Connection as a whole, we've been around since the eighties. We do a lot of like in-school residencies, that kind of thing. Um, but today I'm here to talk to you specifically about the teen programs. Uh, we have a slew of after-school programs that I'm going to present to you all today. Um, so here is our cute little slideshow. Um, just to start, all of our programs are absolutely free. Some of our programs even come with a little stipend. Um, so each program you either have to go through an application process or some programs you just register or submit your artwork. Um, I'll go through all of that, but if you get lost, just email me and I'll, I'll show you the way. So the first program I want to talk to you all about is Teen Reviewers and Critics. It's one of our larger programs. It's again an after-school program completely free. The intention is to get students out into the city, seeing artwork, engaging with artwork and then eventually writing their own reviews and critiques that we'll publish. We have uh five different track disciplines, so each meet on a different day of the week. That includes theater, film, visual arts, multi arts, music. Um, and so for each discipline, you'll go to like Broadway shows, concerts. They saw Billie Eilish a couple of years ago. Um, you'll go to movies, everything absolutely for free. And then you talk about what you see. You talk about it with your peers and with your teaching artist who is an artist in that specific industry. So it's a really, really cool program. It's our biggest program. Um, it's my favorite because it's the one I run. Um, the applications are actually due on Sunday, but if you have some students in mind who you think would be a good fit and they need an application extension, that's totally fine. Um, our program doesn't actually start until October, so we have a little bit of wiggle room. Um, this is for anybody in high school grades nine through twelve, or if it's a non-traditional school, uh, ages fourteen to nineteen. Um, our next program, I'm not sure if any of you all are based in the Bronx, um, but this is a really cool Bronx-specific program. It's brand new this year. Uh, we're partnering up with Sony um for this year-long after-school program to teach students how to produce their own music and how to enter the music industry. Um, this program actually comes with a laptop, a MIDI board, um, a subscription to Logic, a whole microphone headphone setup. So each student will walk away from this program with a whole kit so they can continue to produce music. This program is a little bit different. It's only for ten to through twelfth graders or fifteen to nineteen. Oh, that's okay. This is the coolest program, so I'm happy to talk about this a little bit longer. Um, so yeah, this is exciting. If you have any students who are interested in beat-making, um, hip-hop, learning about the music industry, this is a great program for them. It is specific to the Bronx. Um, all of these programs, these last two programs are in-person, but we do have some virtual programs. Uh, we have a skill-building workshop, just what it sounds like. You spend five weeks learning a specific skill. Um, if you just wanna dip a toe, you can uh do our drop-ins, which is just a one-off workshop. Um, all of these are just registration. You can go to our website. And then we have Pizza in a Movie, which is in-person, first Friday of every month. You watch a movie, you eat some pizza. It's a great program. Please register or if any of you want to register, they can bring your, their friends. It's a really fun program and it happens every month. Um, okay, and then we have a submission program as well. Um, so if any of your students have artwork that they want to submit to be exhibited, we exhibit in office buildings all throughout the city. And I think that's everything from me. Ah, what am I doing? Stop, share. Um, I'm gonna drop all of the links into the chat and email me if you have any questions.
Thank you, Bridget. That was fantastic. And that's how I, I got in touch with Arts Connection through the student exhibits. As art teachers, I mean, that's our main, our main connection. It's fantastic that you can submit your student artwork. It gets professionally framed. The student gets a hundred dollar gift card. They get their work seen in a fancy office building in Manhattan. They call it a great reception. You as a teacher get a, a gift card as well. I can't tell you how much I appreciated having my students work and then having money, extra money to spend on art supplies myself. So please follow that link. Uh, it is, uh, I, I know I don't want to leave out our elementary school teachers, but it is middle school and up for the, for that. Uh, I, I stick with this elementary. We haven't forgotten you. I think there's some people here who have some great programs and ideas for you as well. Uh, I'm gonna move on to our, our next presenter, and that's our old friend John Kaiser from Material for the Arts. If you haven't used that facility and you think you need, you need material, well, John's the man to talk to. And get down there and load up your car, your truck, whatever you can with incredible stuff and supplement your art program through John Kaiser. And we haven't had a workshop with John in a while, but we look forward to maybe having one if not this season, next season. John, I'm gonna give you the floor. It's so great to see you virtually. Go ahead.
Awesome. Thanks for having me, Mario. And thanks, everybody. And I'm joining you here from our warehouse. And if you don't know about Materials for the Arts, it is this massive space here run by the City of New York, by the Department of Cultural Affairs, where we donate supplies to art teachers amongst all the arts organizations in New York City. So if you haven't come here or if you have any teachers in your school that might be interested in including more arts programming in what they're doing, they can sign up, they can contact us and they can come here to this massive space, whether it's getting rolls of fabric or all these beautiful rolls of string and ribbon, books amongst many, many other things, including traditional art supplies like paint and frames. Um, we're here. So uh today I'm just here mainly to let you know that, that we're available. It's, it's an opportunity. These supplies are free because they're donated leftover supplies from the companies and individuals of New York City. Uh, so this is also a way of helping the environment. And if you ever have any students that are interested in doing a project where they're donating materials, that's great too, whether you're uh doing a partnership with any of these great, uh, you know, cultural groups that, that are, you're meeting today. Or whether you're doing your own art projects, this can be fantastic. I do want to make sure that I let you know about our upcoming uh professional development courses that we have. Um, we have an art studio here where teachers come and they work, meet each other and use these reusable materials. Actually, starting this Saturday, uh, September twenty-fourth is our course uh called Paper Maker, uh, and that's utilizing paper in all sorts of different ways to build sculptures, to do projects. Um, so that's a P-credit course. It's something you can come to every Saturday and earn those ASPDP uh P-credits. And then on November fifth, we have another uh fantastic uh program called Music, the Sounds uh of, of reuse. And so you could come and experiment with how music could work into your program. And uh it doesn't have to be for a music teacher. Um, it doesn't even have to be for an art teacher, but it's a way to incorporate the arts and reuse into these programs that you're doing. Um, I also just wanted to let everyone to know that we have free field trips here. So we have field trips uh in our uh classrooms. We have two classrooms. Every day we have students come into Materials for the Arts and learn about reuse, get a tour of our space and get a tour of our art gallery. We have a fantastic Artists and Residents Program. And there's always an opportunity to meet the artists and residents and see the work they're doing with these materials. Um, and also just to see the gallery where, where their work is on display. Um, we do residencies in schools. We're just trying to teach schools, teachers, communities about reuse. And so whether it's a field trip or a professional development course, or actually having one of our teaching artists come into your school to work with your students, um, we're there. So uh if you have any questions about getting signed up, you can always go to our website, materialsforthearts.org, uh, and look on there uh for any information that might be helpful. There's website. Uh, I'm sorry, email addresses there that you can contact in order to connect to the right person to get you signed up or to, to make sure that you have uh opportunity to make an appointment to come in here. Um, we're located in Long Island City, fairly centrally located for the Five Burrows. Um, and we want to help and we want to make, make uh, make it possible for you. So thanks so much for having me. Um, some great groups here today and, and thanks for all the, the hard work you do. Um, I got my love shirt on here that I made, uh, reuse artists for everybody. So thanks, thanks for joining uh this uh, this meeting today, everyone. And thanks for, for including Materials for the Arts.
Thank you, John. So it's great to see your face. I put it in the, in the chat, materialforthearts.org, correct?
Yep, I saw that. That's perfect.
You are on our website as well. People go to the resource page, they'll have a, a, they'll find Materials for the Arts there as well. Almost everybody who's here can be uh tracked down through us, through that as well. Thanks. Get back to that warehouse.
All right, take care, everybody. See ya.
Thank you. Uh, any questions, by the way, if anybody wants to come in? Oh, that's a handsome picture.
What about this one?
Okay, anybody has any questions, feel free. Uh, we'll take a second if you wanted to have a question or say anything or we'll just keep moving at rapid pace here. Uh, which one of these lovely art organizations are gonna be the lucky one that matches up with you? That's what we'll see at the end of our speed dating round. I think we're next gonna hear is from the Museum of Art Design, MAD Museum. We talked briefly about them as the group that we're gonna be at the Museum of Art Design, October 7th, for the jewelry making workshop, pizza and snacks, and we can't let teachers go hungry after a hard day's work. So I believe Erin, Erin, are you here? There you are.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna give you the floor and you could talk about anything else because we all know about October 7th and I wouldn't be surprised if it's not sold out by the end of this event. I, okay, so I'll give you the floor and thanks. Great to see you.
Sounds good. Uh, let me go ahead and play my slideshow there. Um, hello, everyone, and thank you so much for having me here today. Uh, my name is Irene Mahaparn and I'm the Manager of School and Teacher Programs at the Museum of Arts and Design. And if you haven't been to us before, we are located sort of at the southwest corner at the bottom of Central Park, really easy to get to. And our focus at MAD is to champion artists, designers and artisans who are presenting contemporary art and design through the craft lens. So today I'm gonna tell you a bit about our current exhibitions, our Artist Studios program and our onsite and virtual school field trip programs that are called MAD Labs and which are free for Title I schools. Um, so for, let's start off with exhibitions. Uh, we just opened a really fantastic show called Queer Maximus and Machine Dazzle. And it's the first solo exhibition of artist designer Matthew Flower, who's better known by his moniker Machine Dazzle. And the exhibition presents, um, over a hundred costumes through stage, film, street theater and other performance environments. And the show is on view through January 8th of next year. We also have another wonderful exhibition called Chris Shank Offworld, which features the work by contemporary furniture designer Chris Shank. Um, and he creates one of a kind sculptural furniture using foam, foil and found objects. And the show is also on view through next year, February 19th. Um, and another unique feature at MAD is our Artist Studios program. Um, so we are the only museum in the city where working artist studios are actually part of our public space. So when you and your students visit our museum, you're welcome to come in and meet our artists and see what they're working on and ask them about the process. We just started a new cycle of Arts in Residence. Um, and, uh, you can come and visit Lipika Bhargava, who's a sculptor, Patricia Pia, who works in textiles, and also Sid Abadi, who works in textiles as well. So MAD Labs, um, we would love to welcome you and your students for our onsite program at the Museum of Arts and Design. And our signature program is called MAD Labs. Um, and these are all led by our education staff and artist educator team. And an onsite MAD Lab program is approximately 90 minutes in length and consists of a gallery tour and art making workshops. Um, and if you come on a day between Wednesdays and Saturdays, we can also include a free artist studio visit with your program. Um, there are all our MAD Labs are free for Title I schools, $200 for public schools and 350 for, um, private and out of state schools. And I'm also gonna pop my, um, email and a link to our MAD Labs website in the chat so you can check them out later. We are continuing to offer virtual programs to all our folks who aren't able to come visit us onsite. Uh, these are sort of 16 minute abbreviated versions of our onsite MAD Lab programs. It still includes, um, inquiry based discussion, um, and art making using, uh, easy design materials in the classroom. And these are still free for New York City Title I schools and $125 for all other schools. Um, all our tours or MAD Lab tours, either virtual onsite or off dramatically based. And you can choose from one of these six amazing, um, tour themes such as art and storytelling, art and impact, which is about the intersection of art and activism, wearable art, what is designed, materials and process and color, line and shape.
Three minutes.
Awesome. This is my last slide. Uh, so here is just my contact information. Um, feel free to screenshot that. I'll also pop it in the chat. Um, you can reach me pretty much any time of the day, 25 hours a day, seven days a week, because I don't stop working, um, at my email or my phone number. And, uh, we, I didn't make a slide for this, but we also offer C T L A granting, um, teacher PD workshops. If you'd like to be on, um, a mailing list to receive updates for that, just shoot me an email and I'll let you know about, uh, the next one coming up.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody sticking to the time. And Erin, if, if teachers wanted to take a school trips, obviously they can contact you as far as that, bringing a class or a tour of, of students. Did you hear me, Erin?
I can say that again?
I said if teachers wanted to schedule class trips or bring a tour of, of students, uh, that could be cut, arranged through your office as well, correct?
Absolutely. You can go to the website. I dropped, um, the link directly to our school programs page in the chat, or you can just shoot me an email and we'll get you set up and we'll welcome you here.
Great. Uh, I have to apologize. I skipped between C and E and I forgot that D was in the middle. And I'm gonna go back one, uh, for our friends who actually facilitated that meeting where we met the chancellor and I had a chance to address him on our, on behalf of membership. Um, the Arts and Education Roundtable. So Kimberly, if you're with us, I'd love to, there you are. The floor is yours. Hi, Kimberly.
Sure thing. Hi, Mario and hi, everybody. Um, my name is Kim. I use she/her pronouns. I am the Executive Director of the New York City Arts and Education Roundtable. And we are a grassroots service organization working to improve and advance arts ed here in New York City. And as Mario said, um, one of the ways in which we do that is through advocacy. And I'm so excited as I sit here and listen in on this call to hear advocacy continuously talked about as an integral part of the work that we're all doing as artists and educators. So the round table, seeing the immediate impact that's happened with COVID, knowing the longstanding history of how arts education has been impacted, especially since the seventies. Um, we have been working hard to ensure that arts education is, uh, not only continues and survives, but thrives, that it is needed now more than ever. So the round table has been advocating both at the city and state levels, just to highlight a few of the things we've been working on over the past few years. Um, I heard that ARPA funding mentioned earlier today. The round table was part of the advocacy work that led to arts being designated as, with specific line item within that American Rescue Plan Act funding. And this year we also worked with the city council to establish a new $3 million initiative specifically for support around arts education. And we're right now working with them still to try to get that up off the ground and figure out what does that look like now in our schools? That they see it as a down payment for arts in our schools. We have a city council that's very supportive and understands the value of having things like visual arts, media, music, dance and theater in every single school. Um, on top of that, we host briefings with city councils, we lead grassroots campaigns. We garner media attention with folks like CBS News, Chalkbeat, ArtNet, really ensuring that people are talking about arts education and keeping the heartbeat of this, um, continuing with those stakeholders. And we also frequently connect with folks like the chancellor, the Board of Regents, the Governor's Office, DCLA, City Council. Um, I was there today just at Tweed, talking with Paul Thompson, um, encouraging him to connect with this group now that he's in his new position at O A S P, um, and really ensuring that communication is happening. The round table is very much in support of that. Uh, so this, the two things that I wanted to bring to today's call is uplifting that this conversation happened with David Banks. I'm gonna paste this in the chat, but we have a transcript of that conversation. There's a video of it. Highly encourage you watching it if you're able to, or at least just reading through. I think the chancellor is a supporter of the arts. Interesting to hear the points that he makes, how he sees himself within this advocacy work. Um, some of you also might have been involved. We sent a letter to the chancellor, um, earlier this year. We also will probably be doing that again. We think it's important that arts teachers are connecting directly with the chancellor that they're hearing. He's hearing from you all, um, and we got a response. So I'll be sending that out again soon as well. And just the last thing that I wanted to impart today is that let us know how we can support your, you. This is my email address. Our advocacy work is driven by your needs. So as Mario said earlier, I know he is a great resource that as things come up, please feel free to reach out to him. We're in communication, but also feel free to reach out to me as well, that our advocacy platform is largely shaped by these conversations. And I just want to highlight that our big goal at the round table is universal access to sequential, standards-based arts education learning for all students. And that's supported by dedicated, adequate and equitable funding and accountability processes. That's our big goal. Um, and we hope you'll join us along in the advocacy to get there.
Thank you. Thank you, Kimberly. Uh, and we're so lucky to have your organization and you, I met you in person. You're a powerhouse. You don't stop. I think you probably live, breathe and eat art education and advocacy. And so we're lucky to have you here in New York City. And so if people want to just get on the mailing list, do they contact you and, and that way they'll be aware of, of uh, any programs or any advocacy issues that you wanna have mass action for. We can always help with writing letters or signing petitions or, or showing up in person. We're good at making signs.
That's exactly the help that we need. I'm gonna put a link to our website in the chat. Right on our homepage is where you can join our mailing list, where we send out all of our advocacy actions, where we share updates that we learned when we're in this work, um, as we get updates from the city or state. So please reach out, um, and be in touch, join our mailing list and we hope to be as part of our future advocacy effort.
Thank you, Kimberly. Much appreciated. Um, I think we have some representatives of the Frick. I don't, uh, I recall that somebody was replacing somebody else. And is that April, I see?
Hi, April. Hi, Mario. How are you?
How are you? Looking forward to seeing you and coming to our, uh, tour and workshop. I believe we're gonna do May, right? We'll, we'll, we'll publicize that as the, as the new year begins. But, uh, right now, let's hear more about the Frick there at their new temporary home, which is the Whitney Museum, the old Whitney Museum, right?
Yes, we're in the Breuer Building, um, which is at 945 Madison Avenue. Um, and, um, I'm April Kim Tonan. I am the Aisha Bolchandani, Head of Education and Public Engagement at the Frick. Um, and I'm actually going to share my screen if you don't mind. Just so I can guide everyone through, um, some information. Um, and as Mario mentioned, um, the Frick collection is in a temporary space, um, called Frick Madison in the Breuer Building. Uh, we will be there until, I would say about, um, until 2024. Um, and essentially, um, our collection, um, is, uh, from the Renaissance to the early 20th century of, of mostly Western European paintings, sculpture, um, as well as decorative arts. Um, and we welcome, um, schools, uh, middle and high schools, uh, to visit 5th grade and up. And actually, I'm going to just walk you through, uh, what we do is we have, um, online visits. Right now we are booking online visits, um, for, uh, middle and high school, uh, for the most part. Um, and, um, these are basically closer looks at, um, a select number of works in the collection. Um, and we do, we are also able to pair, um, these visits, uh, with, um, an orientation to the Frick Art Reference Library. So for example, if you're a high school class and you are working on a research project, it's something that Karen Roser had mentioned. You are more than welcome to also schedule, um, a joint session, uh, with, um, someone from, um, the Frick Art Reference Library. Uh, we do welcome students 13 and older to the library as well and teachers. So, um, that's a wonderful option to have. Um, and I will actually put, um, all of these, um, URLs, um, in the chat so you can see them. But you can see here, there's information about scheduling an online visit. All of our online visits are free. Um, they're at no cost. And, um, right now we are welcoming a select number of partner schools. Um, and, and sort of, um, frequent visitors, um, people who have booked programs with us in the past, um, to come onsite. It's, it's only because we have very limited slots right now for onsite visits. But just for your own information, all onsite visits for public schools, um, are free, um, as well as public colleges and universities. Um, I thought I would just share that information with you. Um, so that also obviously includes Title I schools. Um, something you might be interested in, um, and I'm just gonna switch over to, um, programs. We have a programs page, um, and this is where for teachers, if you're interested in online and onsite programs, we have a listing of free events, um, which, uh, and they list very clearly if they're online or onsite. Um, we have, for example, sketch nights at, uh, Frick Madison once a month on Friday evenings from 5 to 7. Um, and you can register for that. Um, we also have, um, online, um, what's called, uh, continuing the conversation as well as drawing together. These are online programs. Uh, continuing the conversation is a closer look at an object from the collection. And it's an informal, really, it is a conversation, um, led by someone on staff. Um, it's, it's a wonderful way to really take an in-depth look at an object in the collection. Drawing together is, um, basically sketching and drawing online. You bring your own art materials. Um, it's an opportunity also to share your work, um, and to look at, um, a work again from the collection, um, and learn more about it and draw together. Um, something I also want to point your attention to is, uh, we have, um, a free community night coming up on Friday, November 4th called the Chang Harrell Open Night.
Three minutes.
Okay. And it's essentially an evening where, um, you're welcome to come to the Frick. Um, it's from 5 to 9. Um, all the galleries are open. Um, we will have, um, actually, um, sketching, uh, we'll have costume models, live music, food, um, as well as, uh, gallery talks, uh, focusing on, actually, one talk will focus on, um, second floor where there's work by, um, Van Dyke, as well as, um, on the fourth floor. Uh, we have a special installation. We will have one that starts in October, um, of the artist Oliver Elisen, um, paired with Claude Monet. Um, we also have a drawings exhibition opening in October called the Eveyard Gift, um, actually named for, um, our board chair, who is, uh, essentially gifting, um, a collection of 26 drawings ranging from the Renaissance through, I would say, the early 20th century. So you'll see a range of artists like Degas, Sargent, uh, Vige Le Grand, um, cause artists like that in the show. Um, and that will be opening in October. Um, something else I'll just point your attention to very quickly is the Frick Art Reference Library. This is also on our website. Um, you are welcome to make an appointment to come in if, if there's research you would like to conduct or learn about. Um, have an orientation with the library and you can do that online, um, or onsite. Um, and as, that also gives you access to our archives, um, as well as online, um, references. Um, so I will put all of this information, um, in the chat so you can, um, you can essentially look at the site for more information. Um, something I also want to point out is, um, if you have additional questions. Actually, I gotta stop the screen share, so. I think we can stop the share and then, um, if you have any questions, the email is, um, schoolvisits@frick.org. I'll just put that in the chat. And again, I'll just put all of the, um, URLs here so that everyone can see them. But thank you very much and I look forward to welcoming all of you to the Frick Collection.
Mario, you're on mute.
Sorry. As I was saying, uh, Carl, one of our members was saying it's nice to see the Frick collection in a new space. And we all miss the, the old Whitney as well. That beautiful Frank Lloyd Wright building is being put to great use. Uh, we also hope that when the new Frick mansion is finished or whatever you guys have in store there, that we'll also be giving an invite to come and tour the collection at its permanent, back at its permanent home.
Absolutely.
Teachers, uh, please, yes.
F, uh, School of Atelier Arts.
Yeah.
You, you skipped that one.
I wanted, I, I, I don't know if they're here yet. Is somebody from, uh, Mandy Theis or the School of Atelier Arts here with us today? Uh, I know sometimes they get busy and it, it dovetails into the Frick because if you're a teacher who wants to work on, on drawing, like the masters and getting the old school atelier method, the School of Atelier Arts, uh, ran, run by Mandy Theis, has a great masters program and incredible, uh, classes. If you need to get your 30 above, I would, uh, recommend that. Um, Erin, can you hear me? Is Erin with us?
I can.
Erin, can you just find the information for the School of Atelier Arts and put it in the chat? Because I, I'd like people to know about it. Mandy does some incredible work, uh, and she, she's really taken off on this whole program where you could get your masters and your masters will culminate with a residency in Florence, Italy. So, hey, what better way to get your 30 above and then get your higher salary and, uh, and become a greater artist. They're incredible. If you really want to strengthen your, your realistic, your drawing from life and, and realism, uh, like so many of the masters that we see when we go to the Frick. Okay, I'm gonna remove your spotlight. It's so nice to see you again, April. I'll see you soon and enjoy. Um, I think we're going to, uh, move on unless I, Atelier Arts, let us know that they're here. We're gonna move on to Teen Arts Salon, Salon, Saloon, Salon. Am I, what am I saying? Isabella, I've known you for years.
Mario, hey, everybody.
How you been? Good to hear.
I'm good. I'm good. I went to PS30, uh, sorry, I went to Murray Currie, where Mr. Asaro, uh, taught for many, many years. So I didn't have him as a teacher, but my name's Isabella Bustamante. Welcome to the Teen Arts Salon Party. I am- my name's Isabella Bustamante. Welcome to the Teen Arts Salon Party. I am born and raised in Queens and a New York City public school graduate. Our organization supports, develops and promotes adolescent artists and demystifies the process of starting a career as an artist. We have two really strong tenants, which is that we want to give young people the right to authorship and the right to compensation because our visual and cult culture includes things that are very urgently made by youth. So here's some of our crew. We were actually hired and all these kids were paid at MoMA PS One to dress up as different tarot honoring Nikki Desant Fowles exhibition. That's me there. That's the Empress, the Fool, the Sun, the Star and Death personified. I wanted to show y'all just a couple of programs that I've run with Teen Arts Salon over the summer. One of my major partners is the Drawing Center. So if you have young people who are obsessed with drawing or sketching in their sketchbooks all the time, this is for you. This was a program for rising tenth and eleventh graders. That young person there, Anisa Razak, was my co-teacher who did all this art. And we worked with young people six days in a row, really early in the morning from nine AM till noon to draw three hours a day with tons of short and long prompts and collaborative exercises. It was super fun. One of the things that we did was create an ornamental band across the page. So students were given a symbol. It was a one-page that explained the history of how that symbol had different associations in the world. So that's the sun. That's the fly and the mosquito. These are ninth and tenth graders who did this based on an exhibition called The Grammar of Ornament. Here's another high school sketchbook there. That's a ornamental band of a tenth grader based on the frog. And they only had, I think, an hour to do this, plus whatever they did with homework time. So we really have young people drawing super fast and loosely that way that they are not in their head and overthinking the work. We also do a lot of work with middle schoolers in the Queens Public Library. As a Queens kid, I feel like Eastern Queens, particularly from Elmhurst onwards, can be super underserved in terms of conceptual programs, but also ones that are super contemporary. So we ran an illustrating graphic, the novel camp. This is my student Adriana. I just wanted to highlight her because she did this beautiful drawing here. So one of the things we had in the camp was how do you show one scene in your novel from different perspectives? And we worked with middle schoolers on that. We also chat with them a lot and we will have a virtual program coming up for sixth through eighth grade in November, once a week, just for an hour, talking about the science of creature design and character design. So the circle, triangle, square situation, this was all drawn, by the way, by a sixteen-year-old. So one of the unique things about Teen Arts Salon is our co-teaching artist is always a young person between the age of fourteen and twenty-one. So that way, young artists are having the pressure to emulate things that seem super intimidating for them. And there's a little bit more of approachability in the style, and also there's that representation piece. So program, you may be wondering if you're liking my style that's coming up. It's called Drawing All Stars. This is in collaboration with the Drawing Center. It says twenty twenty-one because we are going to be starting our new cycle. It's actually going to launch November first for ninth through eleventh graders. And Drawing All Stars is a mix between coming and looking at contemporary drawing at the Drawing Center and then hanging out in our studio space and doing independent work.
Three minutes.
Awesome. So this is us in that Drawing Center space. This is some of the sketchbook work that is based by Walter Price that was on the wall particularly. This is inspired by Fernando Laguna. We got some Christine Sun Kim vibes. So again, a lot of sketchbook development. That's what I specialize in. Here's us on the train going there. For their storytelling projects, the young people had to do which they spent six months on. So this is a six-month pre-professional development program where they only come twice a month for either a full day or two, three-hour days. One day spent in the Drawing Center, learning about contemporary drawing. And then the other in our studio space. Here are the drafts for Sadie, whose brother saw a ghost. So they had to tell us a tale and illustrate it that was not a memory they actually experienced. This is a ninth grader here, shout out to Jocelyn Chimbo, who showed us some of the bones in her family's house in Ecuador. Came up with this piece after the six months. It's the final one. This is just some work that we did of infinity patterns at our last time. It's a super fun program. So if you have kids that are just non-stop drawing all the time and they want something that's a little bit more intensive, but definitely focused on works on paper, we're a good program for you. This is what the submissions looked like for the last bunch of students that came through. We don't ask them to show completed pieces to apply to this program. We really want to see a lot of work in progress and sketchbook-based work.
How, how do teachers find you, contact you?
There you go. That's my final slide. So I have some info about what's happening here. There's my email and Teen Arts Salon's websites. If you could take a screenshot of that. If you got middle schoolers, please send them to me. We have so much fun. We're looking at manga, anime, the graphic novel. We laugh twenty-four-seven. It's great. So if they're not in Queens, they can come through. That's happening every Wednesday in November. And then the application's going to launch for Drawing All Stars two point O in November. You could also find out more about those high school programs at the Drawing Center's website. Both of these posters are somewhat outdated, but most of the info is there. It was good sharing this with y'all. And please reach out to me if you got some superstars that want that mentoring, that really are looking for that kind of funky community of young folks to hang with because we certainly got a lot of prodigies and rock stars in our cohort.
I had some students that came through your program. They loved it. And, and I, on your first slide, I think you should get some of those kids and, and connect them to Junk Couture and get them started thinking about. There, there's really a great opportunity for New York City teens there as well. So maybe you have these super creative kids who love fashion. Steer them to Rory and, and to that site. Thanks so much, Isabel. It's great to see you again. And I'm going to move on. Thank you. It's the Guggenheim Museum, we said we had somebody here and it's Lara. Is that Lara? That's you. Hi. All right, I'm going to give you the floor and thanks for coming today.
I actually also have my colleague Rachel here, and we're going to start off talking about our school programs offerings. We're just setting up our slides. Give us one moment.
Okay.
Here we go. Okay.
There we go.
We're going to be sharing our Guggenheim School and Teacher Programs offerings today. There's a few different sections and breakdown that we're going to go into based on the offerings just for school tours. Anything with our Guggenheim for All program and also information about our teen program and our actual teacher programs. To start us off, for school programs and school tours, we offer both onsite and virtual tours for any K through twelve students and for all DOE schools, they are free of charge. For other schools, the prices range depending on how many students will be actually attending the tours. Virtual tours have a fixed rate of a hundred and fifty dollars for a one-hour experience. And for onsite tours, for one to sixteen students, it is a hundred and fifty dollars, including all chaprums. And for anything from sixteen to thirty, there will be a charge of two hundred and seventy-five dollars for anyone that's attending. Each one of our tours is a one-hour experience and we have seven different titles for themes that we work with. Those themes range in a variety. They, they cover pretty much everything. They can go from just being something about, you know, Frank Lloyd Wright and the architecture of the actual Solomon Art Guggenheim Museum. They could be something about like a curricular connection having to do with making change and artists as activists. Where we focus more specifically on social justice and change makers as students that are more at that level of conceptualization and information learning and mostly high school age. We also have just a theme based on what's on view, current exhibitions, which highlights our permanent collection, the current exhibitions that are on display in the museum and a variety of other themes that can all be available on our website. And each one of those tours, as I said, would be a one-hour experience where the students are visiting about three to five works of art and they'll be led by a guided educator who is trained in specifically inquiry-based learning and takes them through the museum focusing on this theme. They usually end up making one to two art pieces, little things or a drawing or something like that. That's a gallery safe material. They can then take away with them at the end of the exhibition activity. And a virtual tour would be much the same. It would just be online virtually, either on Google Meet or Zoom. And we offer all of those options as well. For our Guggenheim for All program, that is our program specifically for autism spectrum students. So it is a very similar tour program. At this time, it is offering just virtually and onsite tours. We are not doing our multi-session program that we used to offer with Guggenheim for All. But most of our Guggenheim for All programs will offer a virtual onsite visit ahead of time. So they'll get to meet the students one-on-one before they actually physically meet them at the museum if they are doing that instead. And for a virtual visit, it would just be one visit onsite, on, online. And those programs can be anything for a twelve-to-one-to-one class, a six-to-one-to-one class, eight-to-one-to-one, anything where a student would be somewhere on the autism spectrum. It's focused more on sensory activities and really enhancing their engagement and focusing on making sure that these students are also receiving enough art enrichment, as that's sometimes something that we don't focus on in a museum. For us to show a little bit about our upcoming exhibitions.
Three minutes.
Okay, for our upcoming exhibitions, our next two major exhibitions that we will be having, have, have having will be opening this fall. Our first one is Alex Katz, which opens on October twenty-first, and our second one is Nick Cave, which will open on November eighteenth. Alex Katz is essentially a bit of a retrospective, mostly portraits, social scenes, landscapes and paintings. And Nick Cave is both imagery of performances, his large-scale pieces and sculptures and a variety of other imagery that would be associated with his like soundscapes. And I will pass this over to Rachel to discuss our teacher and our teen programs.
Thank you. My screen is really glitching, so let me know if anything goes wrong. Just stop me and I will adjust. So yes, these are upcoming exhibitions. We're also excited to continue offering educator programs this year. Karen Rosner mentioned the Career Series, which I lead along with my colleague Amy. So we would be so excited to have some of you there. In addition to that Career Series, which you can sign up through Karen, we are launching a new program called Our Educator Gathering, which will be a monthly program for teachers to connect with the exhibitions on view, connect with each other, reflect and share ideas together about how to bring the Guggenheim back into your classroom. So that will be on November second from four to five thirty PM. We are still getting these links up on the website, but I'll share how you can sign up for our mailing list so you can have access to these events. We are also holding a date for our educator open house on January twelfth. So more information on that forthcoming, but this is really an evening to come to the museum, see the exhibitions, have a glass of wine and some snacks and connect with each other and, and really just enjoy being in the space. I do also want to shout out our teen programs. My colleague Laura is not here, but she runs our teen programs. And our year-long paid teen program called the Goog Teens Collab has applications closing tomorrow. And that's a really wonderful program that I served as a mentor on last year that really equipped students with this idea of discovering their own agency through the arts and also has a little bit of a careers focus as well. And then Goog Teens Conversations is a monthly drop-in program that there will be more information forthcoming, but the theme of that series this semester is going to be environmental justice, which is a really relevant, timely topic that also connects with the Nick Cave and Alex Katz exhibitions in a few different ways as well. Here is our contact information for school tours. You can contact Lara. I work on our educator programs. And then my colleague Laura works in our teen programs and we'll paste relevant links in the chat shortly. So thank you all so much. We're super excited to welcome you all to the Guggenheim this year.
Thank you, Lara, and thank you. I'm sorry. Laura, Lara and Rachel. It's nice to see you virtually. Hopefully I'll come by and see you at the museum. I see you skirted the rules by double teaming me, but I'll allow it. I, I really, it's hard when like somebody says you have three, four minutes. I know it's a lot to give out and a lot of information. I thank all our members for bearing with us. We still have a few more to go. And then I want to open up the floor and I would like if we left anybody out or anybody wants to put in their two cents, I would love, we would love to hear from you. We miss the days where people could intermix in a live setting. I know the virtual setting doesn't really allow for that. I'm going to say the Stapled Arts Cent, Arts Organization, Charleese, Charleesea, right? Charleesea Joy Cole. Hi, Charleesea. Thank you for being so patient and waiting for you. I'm going to give you the spotlight.
Okay, no problem. I'm gonna.
There you go.
Share my screen. And in the meantime, I'm going to just drop all of the information in the chat now so that if any of you would like to check it out. And so, hi everyone. My name is Charleesea Joy Cole and I am the founder of Stapled in Art. Our mission is to inspire Black and Brown emerging artists and art professionals through our education. Our three pillars are representation, our education and professional development. We were founded in twenty twenty-one and during the first year, we focused on representation. We did that through having artist talks through our Instagram Live. And those talks are available right on our website as well as still on our Instagram. And the talks were with Black artists working in the field in different sectors such as photography, scenic design, mural design. We have nonprofit organization founders and they just talked about their experiences in their journeys in art and how they landed on their field. We also shared Stapled and Spotlight, which showcased contemporary artists working in the field, emerging artists, Black artists from the past who was often overlooked and organizations that amplify people of color. And in the second year, to provide representation in our education, we've actually developed a line of acrylic paint that features twelve-inclusive skin tone colors. And so like you, many of you, I was a New York City teacher. I taught high school in the Bronx. And one of the ways that we can bring cultural responsive our education to our classroom is creating self-portraits, family portraits and community portraits. But what I noticed was that a lot of the skin tone colors were really targeting younger age groups and having washable paints, tempera paints. There wasn't really the quality of acrylic really available on the market. Another thing is that a lot of my students come with a gap of experience of art and a lack of color theory. So mixing skin tone colors was really difficult for them. And I know you all understand what it's like to have twenty to thirty-four students in your classroom and you're running around to help them individually to really help them represent who they are and their identity and make their skin tone. And so I created this product in order to meet the diverse needs of students, but also really think about teachers and their ease in classroom management and providing responsive materials. And so if you go to the website, there is a product page here. And like I said, I created this for the students, but also with teachers in mind. And so if you scroll down and you're interested in bringing this to your classroom, you actually can download a PDF that you can then print out and present to your administrator. And on this PDF is all the information about the product in terms of the colors and everything there. Another thing, on the back of each box, there is a QR code that links you to our resource page. Our resource page will have a list of artists of color. It's not up yet, but this is coming. Artists of color who are creating portraiture so that you can reference these these artworks while using the paint.
Three minutes.
Thank you. In addition to having essential questions and creative prompts as well. And so, like I said, the resource page has a PDF that you can print and you can present to your administrators if you would like to bring it to your. But today I would like to give twenty cents away, so a to one deserving teacher. And in order for you to win the twenty cents for your to a one deserving teacher. And in order for you to win the twenty sets for your classroom, I'm asking that you sign up for the newsletter as well as fill this short survey that's on the resource page. And it just asks five simple questions. And this is a way that you can win twenty sets for your. Like I said, in order to, you know, present it to your administrator, printing out this one pager will be helpful. And at the bottom, there's a QR code for the resource page that will be equipped with artists of color, working in portraiture, that you can reference while using the paints, essential questions, and creative prompts. And on the right, there's a QR code going directly to the product page. And there are going to be exclusive discounts for art teachers in schools, for nonprofits providing our ed services, because again, this was created for diverse students and to provide ease for teachers who are working in portraiture, especially with those students who may have a gap of experience with color theory. So again, all of the information is in the chat. And if you would love to win a class set of twenty, please make sure you sign up for our newsletter that comes out weekly and fill out that survey on the resource page. Thank you all so, so much for allowing me to present.
Thank you, Charlecia. Thank you for finding us and reaching out to us as well. That's the beauty of our website and our email, that people, we're finding people coming and bringing what they have to offer to us. And it's great to share with everybody today. And I wanted to thank you. I want to thank everybody who's made part of this meeting. And at this point, I know there's a lot of empty boxes, black boxes and muted mics, but I would like those cameras to come on and I would like those mics to come off. And I'd like to give all of us a round of applause for a wonderful meeting. And then open up the form, the floor to anybody who has any comments or would like to share any insight of first week of school, how's everything going, any ideas you might have. So already, we're gonna unmute on three. I'm looking for class participation. Carl, I'm looking at you. I feel like Wonderama here, all my students. And let's, thank you so much. And I really appreciate it. Looking forward to another great year of programming through the New York City Art Teachers Association, October 7th. Please sign up. There are a limited number of tickets. I think there's maybe. Thank you. I think there's about fifteen or sixteen tickets left. So if you can meet us on a Friday night for pizza and a great night at the Museum of Arts and Design, we're waiting to see you there. And I'm gonna stop talking now and don't want awkward senses. Anybody want to jump in and say hi or just say something we missed? Or is there a group here who wants to share?
Jake Jacobs has his hand up.
Jake, that's great to see you. Hey, Jake. Go ahead.
Hey, Mario. Hey, everybody. Yeah, I was listening a little on the person that has the Teen Salon and it sounded like that was in Queens. I was wondering how easy or difficult it would be to send middle school kids from the Bronx to participate. Is that person still around?
Yes, Isabella.
Yeah, I'm still here. So we have had middle schoolers come from other boroughs for the particular drawing one that we have in November from five to six PM on Wednesdays. That's all virtual. That program with the Queens Public Library, and it's only in January that we will start doing once a month in person for middle school. So it would just be once a month. So if you have someone from the Bronx that's willing to commute, I've heard a lot from Bronx families and sometimes I try and recommend them, things that are obviously more convenient to where they're at, because there's such a dearth of those really funky conceptual middle school programs. But we would, we're located in Court Square. So it's the E train, the seven train, the G train, and then if you go to Queensborough Plaza, you also can get on the QR and N train. So if any of your families have access to those trains, that's where we're at.
Right. Thank you. I thought somebody had chimed in that they weren't on the agenda, but wanted to share their group. If that person is here, I would love for them to chime in. I wanted to thank, oh, I see Amy is here, some of our board members. Amy, thank you for reaching out to Museums at Guggenheim. Responded and it was great to hear from them. Hi, and Clarice, our treasurer and graphic designer is here from an incredible apartment. We could have a tour just of the artwork in her apartment. Joan, you want to have your hand raised?
I just want to mention in listening to all these wonderful programs that the student exhibit, that the citywide student exhibit that Nikata is sponsoring is open to students K through twelve. And the resources reflect different cultures that are on there. So it's worth for elementary teachers as well as middle and high school teachers looking at that program and submitting work.
Thank you, Joan. And I also see, I did introduce the executive committee. I want to thank them for all the work. I couldn't do it alone. I get embarrassed when people say thank you to me alone. It is a whole group. Antonio Jacobs, thank you. Stephen Drake's, thank you. I introduced everybody. Of course, Erin and Lisa were always here from the beginning. If I missed anybody, a thousand apologies. And look at that, it's six thirty already. Well, that wasn't too bad. It's great to see everybody. And pretty soon, we're gonna see you live, hopefully back at the UFT or at a museum. Don't forget, we have Art Club tomorrow. Region Eight has a great program with the Society of Illustrators. I'm coaching my daughter's soccer team. I might come for a quick drink, but I have to slip away. But I'm really, my heart goes out to everybody in the art ed community. Let's keep us strong, let's stay safe, and let's work on the best behalf of of what we know the visual arts can do for our students and young minds in this city. Thank you, everybody. And.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Bless you all.
Bye.
Oh, great job.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, Amy.
Bye, Erin.
This is my favorite part. Everybody can just talk freely. Hi, Alana. Hi, Alana.
Bye.
I'm excited to jump on that newsletter and maybe try to get some of those free colors because I have about forty-six languages and colors in my school. So I want to, I know I'm elementary, but maybe that will be helpful for me.
There was a lot, a lot of resources available. I'm so glad that we had such a great turnout. And looking forward to the January live show, October 7th, and the full year of things that we're gonna be doing. So I'm gonna sign off. I gotta go find my brother-in-law. He has adult Alzheimer's and he slipped out the door while we were meeting. So I have a geo tracker. I'll find him.
I'm sorry, what was that last meeting that's coming up next Friday? Where is that? Next Friday in Manhattan?
Society of Illustrators. That's through the New York City, the New York State Region Eight. And Melissa, just contact Melissa Bernbaum to register. Jake, it's great to see you again. Good luck, everybody in the school year.
Mario, good luck. I'll see you guys soon. Bye.
Antonio, great to see you.
Bye bye.